Seven fifteen, I am a few seconds behind your, your phone there for some reason.
Don't worry, I know quickly.
Okay. So, um, welcome to tonight's extraordinary, uh, meeting of the town promotion committee. Um, I have apologies for absence from councillors Huxley and Ara, I think everyone else is here. Um.
Chair, can I, councillor Moore?
Oh, yes, you're quite right, councillor Moore, do we have any other apologies? Do we have councillor Moore's apologies? No. Um, do we have any declarations of interest? No. Um, okay, so straight into, uh, the first item on the agenda, which is the New Year's Eve event. So, um, just for those who are listening, um, the committee, um, has a budget of ten thousand pounds set aside for a New Year's event. Um, the committee tonight is being asked to consider using this budget to fund a joint project to be organised by GB Carnival, C I C, St George's Church and J H Events. Um, details which are in the attached report from the town clerk.
Mm-hmm.
Um. So, just a, a kind of recap and, um, Rebecca, fill in and correct me if I miss any bits out. Um, last year we had, um, an event by this same consortium that included a New Year's Eve lantern parade and other elements of, of New Year celebrations, as well as, um, a lead-in of quite a lot of different other aspects, um, of December celebrations. What we're considering tonight is only the element that is for the New Year's Eve, uh, lantern parade and what is required in order to put that parade on. Um, Rebecca and I have met and we've looked at ways of spending that money. Now, when we did the budget last year, we were uncertain about what we might need, whether or not the, the Ramsgate Winter Lights Festival, previously the, the Ramsgate Lumiere, um, how that would go, whether or not we would be able to incorporate that into, um, the Ramsgate Town Council's budget. But last year, Ramsgate Town Council did not put on a separate New Year's Eve event. So what we're looking at now is, um, we, well, I'll just recap. Rebecca and I looked at what ten thousand pound would buy, um, if we were to commission someone to do the sorts of things we've done before, like the fireworks or the drone display. And also another option, um, that we looked at was what we did with the, um, Dunkirk Memorial, which was the projections on the clock house. Um, at the moment, I'm not sure that the clock house, we might not be able to project on it because it might have scaffolding around it, so that might not even be an option. And basically, um, if we were to use this, um, consortium to put on the winter parade as they did last year, including all of the preparation of the community work, we would get an awful lot more bang for the buck, um, as far as community involvement and other aspects, rather than the ten-minute display on New Year's Eve. So this felt like a lot more, um, value for the use of that ten thousand pound and provide something that would lead in the run-up to work with children, families, uh, and everything else in the preparation period. Is there anything else you wanted to add?
I don't think so.
So it's open to questions and comments. Councillor Orban.
Yeah, can I, the, um, on page one, at the bottom, you've got the description of various things, eleven lantern workshops.
Yep.
Uh, parade costs, event application, road closures, blah, blah, blah. Sam Bayard Wonsom Band, how about, costing. Um. Finale, you'll find, yeah, finale, partnership with Ramsgate Tunnels and marketing.
Hmm.
And is that, how has that, that money been arrived at? How is those things been found?
Well, originally, um, when the consortium put in, um, what they wanted to do for the Ramsgate Winter Festival, um, these things were put together at the same time. So it was like one event, you had all of the, the events running up and this was there as well. So what we did was we, we took all of the elements out that they had costed and put them together and went, that's over here, this is, this is the New Year's Eve event. So the, the work, the lantern workshops, um, are, the, the workshops that are just for this event. There are other workshops that will be part of the grant scrutiny panels, um, to be considered, not this bit.
So for that, you've taken, so that's what they come up for this New Year's Eve? Okay, not from last New Year's Eve, but I think that's what I was just trying to get at really, really, this is. Um. And their total is eleven thousand two hundred and forty, so that's obviously over what our budget.
Sure.
Hmm.
Yep.
Yes.
Councillor Nixon.
Okay, so last year, the Grant Scrutiny Committee looked at effectively this event of which we, um, proposed a two thousand pounds offer. And we have the history of like, that got changed, all this got moved over, et cetera. Um, and they got ten thousand pounds in total to do an event. Let's talk about the event in a minute, but, but the fact of the matter is that money went from a sort of like an annual offering of, of about two grand up to ten grand. This part is only a small ask of what they, uh, you know, of what, of what they're asking. So this is like one event and they're asking seven thousand two hundred and forty, plus there are other things coming up in the grant scrutiny panel. Now, one of the things that we want, so a different budget, I understand that. One of the things that we were very particular about in grant scrutiny was the fact that this isn't, this isn't somebody's annual wage that we are supporting. We are supporting the town for events that benefit the town and benefit groups that again haven't had an opportunity to do other things before and so on and so forth. So there's a whole criteria of what we as the Grant Scrutiny Committee look at. And again, I realise this is a town promotion budget, but let's not lose sight of what's happening and why we have to be scrupulous about who we are giving money to. Now, I understand, as you've said, that giving, um, you know, ten grand, for example, to an outside company to do something, we wouldn't get as much bang for our buck, I get that. And yet, this event by these people, when they happen, tend to, one of the things that they, they lose on, and it's, you know, they've got a seven hundred pounds pot for it, but it is always missed out on, is marketing. And the biggest comment we get from everybody is, I wish I'd known that was on. So we are targeting the same type of people, the people that might know it all, or family or friends that are involved. And we need to make sure if this is going to happen out of their budget, this is promoted far and wide, a lot further and a lot wider than they have done previously. Because the, you know, the, the audience for this amount of money doesn't equate the amount of money that we offer, even though it's a New Year's display, so we have to bear that in mind too. So I'm conscious of the fact that we are effectively subbing somebody's wage every year and I realise that we are getting something for it, but it's gone from like a small pot to a big pot to, oh, hang on, it's an even bigger pot and oh, this is just a bit of the money that you want, let's just keep it real, shall we?
I don't know, I'm gonna have to ask Rebecca, do you have any idea, um, whether or not there are any wages salaries paid out of this, uh, list? Because I'm trying to remember what, what we were looking at and I don't, I didn't think there was, that's why I'm asking.
Well, I can tell you for now, we, when the Grant Scrutiny Panel looked at it, we asked the same question because it wasn't obvious and yet when we asked the question, it came back as a yes. But it's like, it wasn't, it, it, it's not disclosed in a way that they want anybody to make it obvious. So yes, it, it, it is going to be, and I'm not saying that's such a bad thing. I'm not saying people should do things for free. What I'm saying is, we, we, as a council, are trying to benefit the town as best we can with the amount of people that we can. Now, if this is the best option, fine, I'm not against it. I'm just saying that we just, we don't, we, we, you know, we're not going to be hoodwinked. We need to look at things with a clear head to make sure that this is, gives us everything we want.
Includes paying, um, musicians, do remember that, that's in the set. I do remember that was included, instead of finale part, was included, singers and musicians that performed on the picture, if I remember right. Um, and also they pay for the artists that do the workshops, so they bring people in, um, to what they did last year.
It's the they, Rebecca, it's the they, it's not the artists, um, okay?
Yeah, and, and I know that they also commission, uh, Archi, Archimy, I can't remember the name, Archimedes, um, who are sort of international carnival performers and they, they're, so they're part of the way, that salary thing. But I don't know about the, the extra.
Okay.
You know, I do, so, yeah. Um, and, yeah, sorry, councillor Green.
Yeah, I take councillor Nixon's point about promotion area, I think that's a familiar, um, criticism of events in the town and I, and I fully support that. But the, the criteria are different, aren't they, to the grants?
They are.
The normal grants budget.
Hmm.
Criteria should be about promoting the town, which is what this is about.
Hmm.
Whether we think this is the best way to promote the town at a very important point for businesses in the town.
I think for, for this event.
And I tend to think it is.
I, I, I would support this. I think for this event, um, even if any members of the consortium are benefiting from it, we would have to pay someone to put an event on anyway. So we, that, a lot of that ten thousand pound is going to be going to paying someone to do it because we don't have the staff or the, or the, the facilities to do that. Um, but I, I really don't know the answer, the detailed answer. So hang on, I'm gonna go to councillor Orban next because I saw your hand first.
Yeah, a couple of things really, um, we don't have to put the event on, that's one.
Hmm.
Um, there's ten thousand pounds, yeah, but we don't have to put the event on. We only got into this position because we could not guarantee the fireworks to be appropriate, it could depend on weather. So, um, the other question I wanted to ask is, have, have these, have they got a specific date they want to know by? Is it, I mean, what?
Yeah, as, I mean, as soon as possible so that they can start recruiting the, the artists that are going to be taking part. And that's one reason why we brought it to this committee, rather than waiting till October, because it would, that would be too late, so.
Okay, um.
But no, there is no, no sliming sand date. Uh, I, there would be, um, some of the parade costs about road closures, they, they are timed.
Yes, I understand.
Limited with K C C.
The, the only reason I was asking that, the only reason I was asking that is, um, I did, I did follow, like, councillor Nixon's idea, as we've got the, the, the grant awards coming up this week. Um, so if you get a better, the view of what's happening around that time. Um, and I'm just, I, I am a little bit, um, what exactly are we gonna get for the money?
Hmm.
Um, so I, I, I.
Well.
Because what we've got here is very small.
Yeah.
Very small, there's, there's, there's no, i- it's not elongated to show us exactly what that actually means, um, in that particular thing, but anyway, okay, I've asked my question.
So, talk, talk us through it a little bit, um, the, the information here is not huge. Um, we've seen, um, the, the lantern parades in previous years, we know that it's, um, a lot of people out on the streets.
Well, I think, no, not a lot, that's the problem.
Oh, I.
Sorry.
There was last time when I was, was that department parade last time? So, um, so I, and I, I, I have been to previous ones and last time I, I actually walked the whole distance, uh, which I don't always do. I think one of the things that we don't see, um, when we see the lantern parade itself is the series of workshops that are run with the schools and the children and the other groups, um, in the creation of, of the lanterns and the materials that are used in the parade. So that's an invisible cost, if you like, in a way, that it only becomes visible when you actually see that the people are actually in the parade. So, um, and that's quite a, that's quite a, a, a large part of the costs is putting those on, is, is, you know, just the, the artists, the materials and everything else. So I have got councillor Nixon waiting, so does that?
Yeah, no.
Okay, councillor Nixon.
Okay, so as councillor Orban said, we don't have to put anything on. I mean, you know, that's an option, it's not, I'm suggesting that we do. Now, the thing about the fireworks is, it's a wider visual aspect for a lot of people over, you know, a large area of Ramsgate to be able to see. Lantern parade is basically down the high street, right, so it's very different in its feel. There isn't as many people as you think. I mean, you, you get, you get a group of people in the high street, it's gonna look a lot because the high street's small, but there isn't. Not compared to the, you know, thousands that would stand on the cliff top looking at the fireworks. And that's what I mean in regards to how much are we getting and, and who are we serving? The other thing is that we have had very little feedback through the grant committee or anywhere else with regards to all the workshops that have previously gone over, all sorts of lantern parades and so on and so forth. We aren't getting the information and quite frankly, for eleven thousand two hundred and forty pounds, I'm astounded that there isn't a better breakdown of what we're getting because that is an awful lot of money for what, as a, as a person that has done these sorts of things, a few workshops and a lantern parade that looks like a lot of people because the high street's quite small. And so that's not comparable to a firework display at all. And at the moment, looking at this, I would be more than happy for it to go ahead and I would be more than happy to offer them five thousand pounds. I would be very unhappy with the level of information that we have received and the amount of people that would be seeing it to offer any more than that. I do think the amount is outstanding.
Okay, um, I'll just go back to the, the firework, the issue of fireworks, um, because you're right. Originally, um, it did have a wider reach, but there have been restrictions in the last few years that have meant that people up on the East Cliff have not been able to see it because of.
I'm not, I'm not suggesting we do fireworks, I'm just saying it's comparable. Well, it's the amount of people that have seen it, because it's up in the air and out, is different from the group down at the high street, that's my point, and don't change it into something it isn't.
I think it's chalk and cheese. Um, and, and it's, of course, it's been cancelled as many times on all.
I know, so the fireworks isn't fair.
Okay, councillor Shaw. I'll be back with you.
I've just a few questions really, uh, I'll, I'll agree with what's been said at the moment, uh. This GB Carnival, C I C, is that the same person that wondered is to either ask you, ten thousand, ten thousand pounds is a lot of money and I quite agree with Nixon's opinion.
It's a consortium of three.
And when I, you know, that, that lantern comes up, you get a, you don't get that many people looking. The firework display, we have thousands to turn up. Uh, are these, all this money, is it gonna be vetted and see where money does go? And who is, uh, J H Events? Some money just asking, you know, I mean, it's good to have events, but when you're talking about ten thousand pounds, there's a lot of residents' money. And to be fair, I think that lanterns, it seems to me, same old, same old. And I, I think that many people in the town and I don't think they bother to go and see the lantern. Might be up two hundred people, but they don't.
Well, we, Rebecca has just given me the figures from the other papers we've got here, which is, um, it was sixteen hundred, uh, was, was the figure.
I mean, an observation, that's what I mean.
Um, not, she's a bit more than two hundred. Um, J H Events is, um, Jess Hudsley. Um, and she was the, uh, it's her company that is, was one part of the consortium last year. So it's, it's a three-part consortium, it is GB Carnival, it is, um, Jess Hudsley Events, who are lighting experts, that's where they came in, um, last year, and also, um, St George's, uh, Community Centre at St George's Church. And so the, the three of them work together across the whole of, of the, um, the, the, I'm gonna say the split into two different elements of, of, of the event this year. We're only looking at one part of it, which is the, the.
Could we get more for less? I mean, the five thousand pounds, uh, figure. I mean, if these, uh, the events are so wonderful, it's something which would cover itself. I'm not knocking them, I wouldn't wanna do it up in his heart, but it is.
There's, there's a lot, um, there are a number of elements that cannot be, um, cut. So the, um, the event application and the road closure, medical cover and, uh, some of the artists that are taking part. Um, some may do it for free, but others do, and, and they don't get paid a huge amount, they do get paid a relatively small amount. Um, and so, so a lot of those costs are, we, they can't be cut. And the five thousand we just suggested, um, is pretty much that sort of cover. So you need to have no workshops, no lanterns, if you, that, that's how it looks. I, I mean, you know, that's, I'm looking at the figures here and that, that's how it looks. If you cut it in half, you've got no lanterns and no, no workshops and no lanterns. So I don't know how, how you could cut it in half, councillor Orban.
Yes, thank you, chair, I, I, um, I was just thinking about that and I, I'm right up, sitting here and thinking, well, if we didn't give them anything, what's gonna happen? They're not gonna do anything.
Probably.
So they're relying on the town council to pay for the event that they want to put on, not what we want. That's effectively, that's effectively.
Well, if, okay, if, if they didn't, if they, if we decide as the town promotion committee that we do not want a lantern parade, um, instead we want to do something ourselves, then of the options that Rebecca and I have looked at, and that doesn't mean say they're the only options, then the most likely would probably be a film display looping on the scaffolding.
Sorry, chair, I, I.
But, you know, we, we would do something else.
I, I, that, that, you think a bit, I didn't finish.
Sorry.
Right, so, um, because what I was gonna say was, um, I don't want it not to go on.
Hmm.
Let me wrong, I don't want it not to go on, but I, I just, I, I'd go along with, give them five grand, which will cover the main things that they need to cover and that is the road closures and everything, the safety stuff and everything like that, which would give them that. In artistic terms, which is what I'm talking about, that's for them to look for. They, they need to go through their own groups and whatever to, to get, to get funding. Because even so, so if we give them ten grand and we don't give them one thousand two hundred and forty on, on top of that, they're not gonna stop it, are they?
No, if we give them five, they're probably, well, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking at it and I'm, and I'm seeing, you know, there's no point in, if they can't run the lantern workshops because they haven't got the money to run the lantern workshops, then, and, and a part of that is actually, um, artist costs, which are, you know, not, that, that, that needs to be paid if you're going to pay professional artists to, to actually run them. Um, then I, I don't see it happening, you know, because then there's, there's no point in paying for a road closure if you've got no need to close it.
I, I wish to make a proposal, chair.
Hang on, now can I, can I, I've got two hands up, I'm gonna, councillor Green, my apologies councillor Green, I, I wasn't sure.
Thinking back to last year, in terms of town promotion.
Hmm.
I thought the idea was to build a reputation for having the best light show.
Yeah. This is a part of it.
And this was part of it, not all of it, there's lots of other things that have been improved over the year. And that, what we need to decide, I think, is whether we're serious about trying to build that reputation over the previous years.
Yeah. And, and I think this, this is a part of it and it is still for the years, but this, this is a part of it. Um, sorry, councillor Nixon.
Well, like you say, it's a part of it, but it's not all of it and this is, this is using all our budget. So, so it's a part of it, so why are we using all our budget for a part of it? Because the thing that everybody liked last year is, we have the boats lit up, which is outstanding, okay? So that's one thing. And we have the lights in the town, thank you, they're outstanding too. And they're the things that people spoke about. And when you went to Broadstairs or Market or anywhere else, it, it wasn't comparable to us. And that was for the whole of December and it was absolutely amazing. This is a one-off event for a lot of money, whereas we know, and it comes up, the lighting is more important for December and for trade and for businesses and the high street than a New Year's Eve event, which is going to be an awful lot of money for a very quick thing when not a lot of people see. I would be happy if there were other things to boost the whole, you know, Lumiere element of Ramsgate during December. I am very much against spending this amount of money for that event and I think we could use a better spend. I'd rather be giving another five grand to the lighting because the lighting's outstanding. Why are we spending it on this?
If we, if we were to consider spending any of this ten thousand pound on lighting, we would need to vary it out of the New Year's Eve budget into.
More capable of varying, as well.
I'm just saying.
That's how they got the money last time, yes, but let's not worry about varying it, we're more capable of doing that.
This is the money that was set aside for, this is in the budget, this is the money we set aside for New Year's Eve events. And that's the only bit we're considering. When the Grant Scrutiny Panel meets, they will consider all of the other elements.
Yes, the other things that are put forward from possibly the same people. Do you see where I'm going with this one? It's an awful lot of money into an awful lot of people's pockets for a small amount of return. We can do better than this as a council.
I think, I think the lantern workshops are a, a much bigger return for the work that's.
I know you are.
As it's Helen, and that's what you fought for last social, and you've got it, but you're missing the point every time.
Could I ask how much it would cost for us to do the promotion?
To do the promotion element, the marketing element of this, do you mean?
To really, to really boost Ramsgate experience.
So if, when you say the marketing, are you saying the marketing element for this event?
No, i- if we're pursuing building a reputation for being the best in the area,
Hmm.
around lighting and whatever for the year, how much would it cost?
Okay, so I need to probably break that down. How much do we spend, do you think, oh, sorry, I'm putting you on the spot here, um, on marketing for existing R T C events? And what extra would it cost to, what extra should we, I mean, we underspend, I think, on marketing anyway, I've been trying to up that budget.
Uh, for events, it's normally between ten and fifteen percent, it can go up to twenty. It's a new event, it's sometimes worth investing a bit.
Two thousand, I mean, what if we took that out of this budget and said, we'll do the marketing?
Well, the marketing they've got on here is seven hundred.
Yeah, the marketing they have every time is very low, which is why it's got poor turnout, that's the problem.
Hmm.
I just, they, they, I know that they've, this was some feedback from last year and they've employed a, um, a press officer this time, but I think it's in the other grant application.
Exactly, so in the other grant application, there's a press officer to do this, which is already costing us this. That is my point about, there's other grant applications here, this is not the total amount for this one event either.
We, we couldn't ask, this, for this event, we can't ask the Group Scrutiny Panel to consider this event because it's not coming out of a grant.
That's not what I said. I'm saying it, that the cost for this event doesn't stop at this. It's all Ramsgate Town Council's money, they might get this and then they're going to get more out of grant scrutiny. It doesn't matter whether it's a different budget or not, it's all Ramsgate Town Council's money. For one event, so this, this cost that they have given us here is not the total they are asking from Ramsgate Town Council for one event.
No, the.
You might like this event, Helen, but look at what's happening.
It's a two, what, two and a half, two months, two, one, two, it works out about three months' worth of work over, across the two different, so if you're gonna bring the two together, you've got about two, about three months' worth of work and involvement. Some of that is in the preparation, which is the workshops that will go on beforehand. And then some of it is the more visible bit, which is the things that will actually happen for two months in the town centre, if the Grant Scrutiny Panel approve it, and that's unknown. And then there is this event, which is on New Year's Eve. But it has the, um, workshops backing it up as well, councillor Orban.
If there are other groups who've come up with an event that they wanna put on, New Year's Eve, that's it, it will happen. So others would have to go by the box, they've given everything to one and nothing to any, to any for the others, I don't know whether that's gonna happen.
It's a separate magic to events.
Yeah, and what I'm saying is.
This is about town promotion.
Yeah, but that's an event, I think.
Yes, no, it's something that it did not, no, it's.
Sorry, it's an event.
It's an event, it's an event, but then New Year's Eve is an event.
Exactly.
Whether we put it on as a light, as a, as a fireworks show or a drone show.
But that's what I'm saying, if there were, if there were other people who come up with an alternative to this, which was just as good, just as well, going to be well done and just as good, they can't get anything because they've given it all to them.
Well, we haven't got anyone in the pipeline coming forward on.
But we don't know that, do we, yet?
Well, yeah, okay.
No, we don't, no, but, Chair, I mean, I'm not trying to be argumentative for, for the sake of it. I'm just trying to look at the wider picture as to, as, as to where we go.
How long would you leave it until you make a decision as to whether or not this event, um, has any competition? Because that's the only, the only way is to, is to kick this down the line and go, well, we'll leave it until October.
I understand, I understand.
Which we can do.
Put others, because I, I think it's important. Because I think it's important.
I know, that's what we need.
Thank you, Trevor. There's more light on the subject.
And, and that, and that is, you're going back to what councillor Nixon said right, right at the very beginning. I would like, I would like officially defer it until after the, the grant scrutiny people, uh, councillors have met to decide what goes in and what, what goes out. And if there is a lot more for it to go in towards this event, because that's, I know you're saying, I know exactly what you're going to say, this is for that, this is for that. Well, no, it's not for that, you're making it for that, but it's not for that, it's for an event on New Year's Eve. It doesn't have to be that. If they're getting stuff out of that, if they're getting other stuff to pay for us, the councillors to pay, to employ people as to what they're, what they're, they're after, you know, I've, we've, we've got something, we've got another item here about, about replacing Simon's coach, you know, rather than money, that money went towards that because of what Simon's fought on throughout the whole running year.
Before you, before we get into the next agenda, I actually have an indication of wanting to speak from councillor Orban, who hasn't spoken yet, so I would like councillor, to hear what councillor Orban has to say.
Tell me, tell me, we all need.
No, no, my proposal is that we, that we defer it until after the grant scrutiny, that's my.
Can I hear from councillor Orban first, please?
I need a second of them, I, I would second you or not, and that way it's.
I, I actually asked councillor Orban to speak before you said I propose, so can I have?
Didn't, because I already said it earlier.
Okay, all right, let's, let's, let's have, let's have the argument another day. Um, I would like to hear what councillor Orban has to say because he hasn't spoken yet, and he is a member of this committee. Councillor Orban.
Yeah, I mean, to me, uh, the first thing I want to know is what time of day will they be starting this event? The evening, uh.
It runs, remind me what time it's done, it's, um, we've got it six, it's six o'clock, so it's six o'clock. Um, it starts at six o'clock, the lantern parade, so it's done.
It was eleven ten.
Hours of darkness, which actually.
Then also, have they got any idea what the footfall will be, the amount of people?
It was sixteen, that was the figure you gave me earlier, wasn't it? Sixteen hundred last year is our recommend, is our estimated footfall, um, is what, what was in their original.
It's not really a lot, as you said, is it attracting local people or is it?
Yeah.
Just local people?
And it's, well, it's whoever is in the town. In fact, actually, I did, when I was in the parade, I did talk to some people that had travelled into Ramsgate specifically, um, and they, they were a part of, of watching and being a part, and actually part of what, what was going on. Um, I can't give you, I can't give you the figures obviously for, for how many.
It's because of reputation.
You know, it, it, it is a reputation that will build if we continue doing it. I, I mean, you know, it's, it's one of those things, it, you know, it should get higher numbers every year. Um, but, you know, that takes time to, to get to that stage. Was there any, did you have another question?
No, nothing.
So councillor, I, councillor Green, did you have something?
No.
Or was it councillor Nixon?
We're a town of forty thousand people and you're saying that last year's footfall was sixteen hundred. It's not the first time we've put on, you know, an event for a group in particular. Hence my point about marketing, whether we go for this or not, marketing is really crucial. Now, if you did the maths for like, you know, eleven thousand minimum for like sixteen hundred people, that works out quite expensive. What I mean, what I'm saying is, I'm not against putting this on, I am against the amount of money and I am against the fact that there's more money coming out of different pots for the same thing. I'm more than happy to second councillor Orban's proposal with regards to deferring it because I do think we need all the evidence in front of us. I'd be more than happy to give them an amount of money towards it. I'm very much against giving them the whole lot.
Councillor Green.
I'm not a member of this committee, but.
Sorry?
I'm not a member of this committee, but if I was, I'd take two or three K out of the budget for marketing.
So you'd be looking at, uh, seven or eight K out of the ten that's being asked for, and then we, and then we do the marketing?
Yeah.
That, I could live with that quite happily, um. But, um, I mean, you know, we only have ten thousand in the budget that we've pre-allocated. We've chosen not to, um, move the extra one thousand.
That is, if you can do it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Well, we could do the marketing, couldn't we? I would think, um.
We have a proposal on the table though, why were you talking about?
Is there a proposal, Chair?
There's a proposal.
Yeah. Okay, so we'll go back to councillor Orban's proposal. Um, would you like to just repeat it, to defer it until?
To defer it and to defer any judgment on, on, on this item until the grant, uh, committee has met and we see what the outcome of that is, um, because it will impact upon the event if money's given to that as well. And I think we, as a council, need to then see how much the whole of that would have actually been. And so that was my.
Okay, and you, councillor Nixon's seconded deferring it. I, I will add that when Rebecca and I looked at this, um, to come up with this for tonight, um, I would say that what the grant scrutiny panel is being asked for and what the town promotion events, uh, New Year's Eve event fund is being asked for could be done separately. That's my view, is that you could, so, and that's how we've done it, we split out those costs looking at the, the bigger picture, which is what we did in advance.
Doesn't matter whether, sorry, Chair, if I may.
And then, so it should be possible, it should be possible for the grant scrutiny panel to consider just the grant application independently of this because these two elements could be done separately, or they could be done one only, or they could be done, or they could be considered together. So if, if what, if the grant scrutiny panel gives all of the money and this doesn't happen, then what, what, all the other half of the events that were going on, proportion, pick your figures, uh, would happen, and if the grant scrutiny panel goes, no, we don't want any of the rest of it, we could still do this as an event as it stands. So that's how I'm seeing it. Anyway, those in favour of councillor Orban's, uh, proposal, I, so it's councillor Nixon, councillor Orban, councillor Orban and me, I think that's carried. So the next thing that we will need to do is we will need to re-convise extraordinary meeting in order to, uh, come back and, uh, make a decision about the spending of the New Year's Events Fund, um, after the group's, grant scrutiny panel had considered their element of winter events and the, the winter thing. Are you okay with all that?
Chair, I'll just make that point that I'm just sitting here to observe it and I'm not on the committee, I'm just here, right?
Yeah. Yeah, no, um, so it's councillor Shonan, councillor Green, councillor Green, he said he's not a voting member of the, of the, um, either. So, uh, do we know when the grant scrutiny panel are meeting?
Yes. It's, it's Thursday, I believe.
Right, and when will you be taking your recommendation to, um, so we need, we need to have another meeting of this extraordinary.
About immediately, I think, for the next week.
Right, event applications take fourteen weeks, um, so that gives us a deadline, gives everyone a deadline, um, for when a decis, when decisions have to be made, so do, do the maths for me.
It's about mid-September.
So a decision would need to be made by mid-September.
How we can do that?
So, so.
At least you can do it, it's after four, cancel.
Well, if it.
Twenty seventh?
Of what?
August.
Twenty seventh of August?
Twenty seventh of August.
And when is, sorry, sorry, councillor Nixon, when did you say grant scrutiny meeting?
It's Thursday.
It's Thursday.
Thursday, so your recommendations will be made on the twenty first and they will be going to the full council on the twenty seventh?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, we have to have it.
Okay. So, um.
We can, we can get a meeting around straight after, it's not a problem.
Yeah.
We would need to have a meeting as soon as possible after that because.
Or we can tag it on the end.
Do you want to give them a minute?
We could, if, if that's okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, that's fine, um, so. So obviously we need to, to push that and clarify that with, via the, um, town clerk, but, um, we have a suggested, uh, time is to follow on from full council with the extraordinary town promotion in order to make the decision about the New Year's Eve fund. Okay? We don't need to vote on that because obviously we need the town clerk to, um, to confirm that. So, uh, next item. A minute, I need to move my paper around. Um, so Simon has left, he's gone on to pass us new. Um, I think he's already gone, hasn't he, just, just a couple of days ago? Um, and we need to replace Simon in some form. Now, um, the, uh, town clerk spoke to me and I believe also to councillor Green about, um, from, from the perspective of, um, HR staffing, yeah, um, about how to, uh, look at replacing Simon. Now, a couple of ye, two, three years ago, you will remember that, uh, up until then we had external, um, contractors and, who were running active Ramsgate. We didn't feel we were getting, um, it had become stale, let's put it that way, and, um, it would, it'd become a rolling programme and we weren't really in control of, of what was happening. And so we decided to bring the Visit Ramsgate management in-house. And as a result of that, um, Simon was recruited and took on the role. What we've done now is, is we're looking at where to go forward. Do we just simply replace Simon as active Ramsgate manager as it is? Or do we look at making the brief a little bit wider as, and as we've got here and calling it Visit Ramsgate rather than just Active Ramsgate? So one of the things that was, um, came in last year that we actually looked at through the budget, it's not just Active Ramsgate, we have a cultural and we have a heritage element to, um, our offering at Ramsgate Town Council. And that was something I very much wanted through the last year's budget, that we actually recognised that we had this three parts to what we do. So that in itself has put more pressure on some of the work that Rebecca does. And, um, it was discussed, suggested by the town clerk that rather than have an Active Ramsgate manager, we had a Ram, a Visit Ramsgate, and that's not, it's not says manager, is it, it says, um, what is it?
I have an alternative.
Visit Ramsgate project manager. So, um, in other words, whoever takes this role on will have a slight increase in hours from, uh, what Simon's doing, uh, so we're looking at twenty-four hours a week instead of, I think it was on sixteen, wasn't it?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. So there's a slight increase in hours which will enable more support for Rebecca, and we were looking at that before he actually resigned. That was something that was under discussion anyway as to whether or not we could increase his hours um, in order to, to support Rebecca. So in a way, what this does is it gives us a, a moving on from that discussion, um, and, and formalises what we were already looking at in order to manage the workloads. Um, one of the challenges with the Active Ramsgate manager role was that, um, there would be some parts of the year where there would be an awful lot of time off in Lou being built up and other parts of the year where it was possible to take that. Um, and to some extent, this would help to balance that out a little as well. So there are other advantages with it. Um, apart from that, I think, is there anything else you want to add on the introduction to that? No, um, so, cast, open to comments, councillor Orban?
Yeah, I'm, I'm very much in favour of, um, including our heritage within the role if it's at all possible to get someone who could switch between the two, knows what they're talking about, unless it's heritage and knows what, exactly what they're doing with Active Ram, Ramsgate. Uh, but you could say it's the Visit Active Ramsgate and, uh, I mean, that's just, it's just a mouthful for a job description. I think as, we need a better job description than that, um, because it says what it does on the team, but it's not attractive to tr, attract somebody with the skills that we have, we, we actually need. Um, how much is the salary?
It's pretty cheap.
Yeah, a lot of money.
Um.
It is about eight grand.
Um, it's SCP range eighteen, um, for full-time hours, it would be thirty-one and a half. For part-time hours, it's thirty-three and a half.
What's the, what's the salary?
I think that's right, isn't it? Oh, no, no, I've got that wrong. No, it's, sorry, the, the salary is thirty-one and a half to thirty-three and a half full-time hours, but we're only offering, um.
So what would we pay Simon?
What I just, well, eighteen, we were paying Simon's eighteen hours a week equivalent of what I just said. So, um, so wherever I just.
Oh, forget that then, forget it.
It was, it's, let's say thirty-two, take a middle figure, thirty-two thousand a year, um.
Okay.
So we were paying him fifty percent of that.
Sixty-sixty.
Yeah, yeah, of, of roughly, and that's not an exact figure.
I am very much in favour of Simon, if we can get Simon's good song, we'd be very, very lucky. Um, I think he'd done a brilliant job when, when he was here, um, and, um, to add on, the, the heritage bit is great because, I mean, it's all part of the active, because we took it back walking, aren't we? So you've got a walk-in route to go around to look at what are various heritage things, I mean, that's not, it's not brain surgery, uh, that can be done, so that can be included as far as I'm concerned within the Active Ramsgate role of having a heritage, heritage trail within that and for that to be developed and then put out, and I see that that would be great.
I think, if I, if I may add, there's one thing I'll bring just in a second councillor Green. I, I wanted to say that I'm very much aware that Active Ramsgate was your baby when it first started. It was something that you were very much a part of, of setting up. Um, what this does is, and, and I think it's been great that Active Ramsgate has really led the way. Um, but in the last couple of years, we have moved on and we have brought in more of the heritage and the, um, cultural side. And one of the things I found when we were doing the budget last year was that we looked at the way the money was split. And Active Ramsgate was disproportionately funded compared to some of the other areas. Yet they were also providing some of what they were doing, so we're talking of active is walking, walking was heritage. So there was this overlap where it was, it was a disproportionate, um, presentation of, of how it was. And I think what this does is it, it brings in a, a more, um, realistic, uh, picture, recognition of what we actually do. That's my add to it. Councillor Nixon. Oh, sorry, councillor Green, you were, I, 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 my apologies, you're right, councillor Green.
I'm very aware of our successful relationships with that, which is our heritage and, uh, also how successful the Ramsgate day was, which I guess is our culture.
Yep.
Um, so when it was put to me by the town clerk about changing the job description, I readily agreed.
Hmm.
But I think really it's assistant town promoter that we're talking about. And I'd like the emphasis to be on promotion, promoting. And I'd like the emphasis to be on promotion, promoting. Help Rebecca.
Well, I haven't named, I haven't titled the document. I think you're right. I mean, that is something, it, it, but it is open, I mean, you know, we can change the title. You know, councillor Nixie?
I don't think it is an assistant town promotion person that we're after, the reason being, I think it's a very different role, I think, I agree, I mean, I agree with everything that's been said so far, but for a very long time, one of the things I've been banging on about is, you know, social media, promotion, you know, marketing, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And that itself is crucial for anything that we do. So yes, Visit Ramsgate, include the heritage and rest of it because it makes a difference, you know, it adds on, and as councillor Orban says, you know, walking past the heritage. But it's, it's not the town promoter's assistant role we need, it's somebody to take on that focus over a different slant of the promotion of that, so of a Visit Ramsgate aspect. So, so I see it as, as a, not necessarily an equal role, but definitely like a side role to something as opposed to an assistant role. So I wouldn't agree to assistant town promotion title at all, because it's that element of promoting Visit Ramsgate. Look at what Simon did with regards to design, marketing, targeting different audiences, all of those types of things, that's different from what Rebecca does, and what Rebecca does, she does really well, but you want somebody to do this part equally well.
The, Simon's line management was Rebecca.
Yeah, I know.
And there is no plan to change that. So in that sense, it will be taking on some of what Rebecca does, the excess of what Rebecca does, but as you say, there are very specific tasks within what this role description is required that Rebecca doesn't normally do, but would still be supervised by Rebecca. So, yeah, I can partly agree with Dave that, you know, this is assistant, I mean, how do you feel about it Rebecca? Let's chuck you in the deep end.
Personally, if I, if I had to choose, I think Visit Ramsgate project manager is a really good term for the, you know, when we, we use this Venn diagram, so kind of, if I had had time, I'd have put active culture and heritage. And the way that our town, everything is linked, and that's one of the things we've found with all of the projects we do. So you've mentioned Operation Dynamo, well that's heritage and culture. And even you could argue so is Ramsgate Day because it had elements that looked at our heritage, but it is, it was an event which is kind of where culture goes. And what we've done, we've had 12 years really building on our Active Ramsgate promotion and Simon's done such a great job in leaving this really nice legacy that, you know, is really a nice foundation that we, has meant, we feel that actually now it doesn't need to be the sole focus because we've got these other two really great elements that link it, link in with Active Ramsgate.
Active Ramsgate Week, which is the key plank of Active Ramsgate kicking off the year, and then as the Venn diagram we did last year in the budget helps to illustrate is that all of these things were just, they were just so overlapping, we couldn't split them out. And so we, but the job title, I mean, I, I prefer the title that Laura has come up with, but at the same time, there is an element certainly of what you're saying is that this is someone who is working with and assisting Rebecca in the town promoter role as well. Councillor Nixie?
For the, for the project, we need.
Yep. Councillor Albin, you wanted to say something?
Yeah, I sort of more or less agree with Rebecca, the Active Ramsgate has been sort of exceeded all expectations. You actually looked at it from day one. I bet a few of us thought, Christ, you know, you're taking a risk here. It's exceeded all expectations. And I think there's been an awful lot learned from this. Now, when you look at our heritage, the good thing about our heritage is that we don't have to invent anything, it's all here, but it just needs better promotion. You know, when you actually look at the way that the Maritime Museum has carried on over the years, it worked at two speeds, slow and dead slow, nothing really happened. I think that's.
And I think a lot of the, of what Simon has done under Active Ramsgate will transfer across into looking at the cultural and heritage side and benefit from those systems that he implemented. Councillor Green, I haven't forgotten your proposal councillor Nixie, councillor Green?
I just wanted, I'm not hung up on the title. You've said that.
But you're here as second GP as well, so.
You've said that Rebecca will be managing this side. The other point I wanted to make is TDC at last have recognised and included in their budget paper the, the thing down, down the East Clear Sea front, the beach club.
Oh, right.
They haven't discussed in court about that, about that narrative though.
They haven't got a budget for it, as I know, but they have the possibility of a budget for it from the council. So just bear in mind that that could be coming forward, and if so, I guess we would want to be at least involved.
Okay, councillor Nixie, can I ask, you've made a proposal, can we expand that proposal to accept both the Ramsgate visit brief and the Visit Ramsgate project manager job description? It's two different papers, that's all?
Yes.
Awesome.
Okay, all in favour? Carried, thank you. Sorry, I was just changing your motion and I didn't want to do that without your permission. Town centre festive lighting?
Yes, please.
Yes, I do, oh, hundred percent.
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Yes.
Get rid of that lock. So. I think I'm going to let you talk to this one. We've just given Rebecca a moment as she's clerking the meeting to, to get to the point of being clear-headed and organised, because I think it's better if you, I mean, obviously you've got the, the report that was sent out in advance, so.
So, yes, so apologies, the photos aren't that great, but I'm sure you all saw the town centre decorative lights and know the saga because of previous voting on feeder pillars and, and so on. But the, so we, we had our wonderful decorative lights and we then complemented them with these programmable centrepiece lights and the tree, so they, they basically sing to the same songs, not literally, in, in lights they do. And we can, and you might remember that we talked last year about building upon that, the amount of strings we have, just to make even more complex and interesting displays with those centrepiece lights. So it could be, for example, there's some examples, so you can even do the face of Marilyn Monroe, we can have Starry, Starry Nights, like the mural up at. And we can even map our own because some people in the town council are quite clever at that. Not me. But, so, so the idea was that we then, we then went to the only supplier of these, and in fact the ones that we had last year, he would have to outsource. So the, the price, the prices we've got are from the one company, Festive Lights, who, who are the sort of main suppliers of twinkly lights as they're called. The other option, or the other, the additional request or recommendation on here is proposing rather that we have new banners, so probably everybody remembers the old school banners, there's a, a picture of them in the middle here in the report. Again, we can, we can create these banners using twinkly lights and we can map them and it could say Ramsgate Day, 5th of July, switch on, Market Day, it could be poppies for Remembrance Sunday and so on. So they, they are, they're interactive.
These were used to call cats. These were used to call cats. They're like on the end of York Street.
Yes, so there was one on York Street, one at the bottom of Harbour and one at the top of the pedestrianised section of the High Street. I think even at one point we had one way down on King Street. And they sort of fell by the wayside, but a couple of our technicians are able to build the framework, we've got the cutinery and power in place already, and then you've got on your report a breakdown of costs for that. So the first, the breakdown that's highlighted in purple would be for the almost doubling up what we've got in the centre and for the tree. A lot, extra costs are around controllers and ports that we need in order to facilitate those extra strings. And that figure comes in at 6,068 pound 30. And then the other proposal was for the banners, this would be for two banners, one at the bottom of Harbour Street and one at the top of the pedestrianised bit of the High Street, so people would see it as they were coming down and obviously as they were entering the town at that, that point. And apart from the frames which have been gifted by Nigel England, the cost for that with the need for the controllers and the string lights that we would need for that bit, would come in at 1,920.88. And there's.
We have, we have a motorcycle convention here most days, don't we?
Mondays are quite good.
My watch, yes.
Popular, our harbour front is popular with motorbikes.
Best in the budget.
The budget that's.
Coming to that at the bottom of page.
So, so there's, there's the two options, well, three options in terms of what we could, we could purchase the centrepiece and the tree, or we could purchase the centrepiece tree and banners. It's three, four options, because I'd like to give you choices. You can refuse any further addition, then the two I've just mentioned, or you can defer but recommend it's added to the budget. However, there is budget in the beautification budget heading that would cover this.
You did see it. Hang on, last question. I've got councillor Nixie, I think, just, okay, fine.
Wants to ask a question first.
I'll ask her first. Do we as a council need separate cases if we're hanging it over the highway?
Yes, we need to apply for a licence, in fact it just needs renewing, I've emailed them today about that and have the link for.
Just wanted to confirm.
Can I ask a question? Do we have anything in York Street?
So the York Street project is starting on the 1st of September, so they will be the complementary lights for the warm white, so they'll be the festoon and the big bulbs.
So this is, this is in effect the next expansion on from, from that line.
So that will go along the whole of York Street and then that's a little section of Queen Street.
Councillor Nixie?
So, I mean, this is exactly, you know, where we do get bang up, isn't it, the lighting? It looks outstanding last year and to add to it would only help. I would be more than happy to propose the full amount so that we get, get it done. And so, you know, that's going to build up each year if people come down and see, we're going to name for ourselves. And so I would propose we go to option number orange.
Let us see. I've got, I've got a C on me, on here. So that one will require a request to full council for the appropriate sum from the beautification budget to be wired over to the decorative lighting budget, that's all. So if, so if we've got councillor Nixie proposing option C, you seconded it, all in favour, carried, and that is with the caveat that it is transferred from the beautification budget.
And let's not forget, let's not forget the lighting around the arches.
Yes.
I think prospective programme, you know.
Yes, yeah.
Like patterns instead of just lights.
Yeah, you, you just don't know how much I've grown inwardly every time Rebecca goes to me, I have a new idea for lighting. It's been a bane of my life for the last three years, but that's okay. But it's, it's, it's okay, it's fine, it's just that we joke about it because she's always talking about lights.
We do have the expertise, don't you say, to run this ourselves, do we?
This element, yes, yes, this will all be in-house.
So the last item is date and time of next meeting, it is not Wednesday, 22nd October as listed on the agenda, but it is now Wednesday, the something or other of.
27th.
27th of August, proposed. But obviously that is.
Confirmed.
Confirmation from the town clerk, thank you very much and good night. Thank everyone for watching online.